So Namaste and welcome to this meditation study session. It is the second of three sessions that we're doing on the core teachings. We did one on contemplation, which is already uploaded to YouTube. And this one will be on meditation. And we'll have a further one in December for self inquiry. And we will do more of these as we cycle around. But I just wanted to do these three before this year finished because it's moving very, very quickly. So the idea of these study sessions is just to dive deeper into what I call the core teachings here. That the three things that really profoundly changed my entire existence. Contemplation, meditation and self inquiry became tools that I use every single day and still do. But not so much to escape suffering these days or not at all, but for the fun and the joy of it now. So meditation, this session, we're going to go through. What meditation is, perhaps as well, what more importantly, perhaps sometimes what meditation isn't? As far as in these teachings and I'm going to give some examples here. We'll spend a little while going through some examples of how to recognize what is real. Meditation is a recognition and bringing attention to what is real about us. So I'll talk about why we need meditation, why we would even want to do it and how to do it. And then we'll actually do it. We will use a guided meditation, which will also be recorded on this session. And then depending on time, we'll take a break probably after the guided meditation. And then I'll open it up for questions about this particular subject meditation as I'm teaching it here today. We have a beautiful interpretation here live. So you can ask questions after the break in Spanish or English. If you would like to either share your experience of the meditation that we do or ask any questions in particularly about meditation. So what is meditation and why do we need it? What is it? What purpose does it serve in our awakening journey meditation? For me, I reached a point in my own awakening where I started to see the more attention I put on the separate person that I thought I was, the worse things got for me in my life. And it became quite clear to me, abundantly clear, that I can't put attention on what I don't want and experience peace and joy and happiness and all of those things, a lack of suffering. The sense of a separate self was very, very strongly running my entire life, as I'm sure you have experienced. And so meditation was a way to bring attention to what is real. So the separate sense of self, the person that our whole journey has been about really, the one that wants to wake up to truth is in fact the fiction of our existence. It is not the truth of who we really are. Who we really are is the formless, infinite silence, stillness, consciousness, the one being that is present everywhere in everything as everything. And is totally indivisible, it is not divisible into parts. So we have never been a separate person, a someone, an object, a phenomenon. We have never been the one who seems to be suffering and on a journey back to freedom. And when we can begin to realize that even conceptually, we are then able to see the necessity to bring attention away from that. If we already are the infinite formless self, then any attention we put on something that is unreal, like our separate sense of self, is only going to make that seem more real. The power of the reality that we are shining upon this sense of a someone is going to energize it and vitalize it and make it seem very real. Even if, as I discovered also, we are putting attention on it only to see how we can dissolve it or get rid of it, or even to merge it into the real self. And so the only place I found that I could really hang out with my attention and not make my suffering worse and actually move away from the sense of suffering was by bringing attention to what is real. Meditation is a love affair with what is real, what is already here and what is already the truth of who we are. It's not anything other than that, at least in these teachings. It's only a way to bring attention to what is real every day. You can't replace one habit by just stopping it. Then we all have the habits of bringing your attention to thoughts and phenomena first. We're all unconsciously doing that and simultaneously ignoring the background of our experience, which is not a phenomenon. And the meditation I'm going to describe here is simply a way to bring attention to what is in the background and to stop paying attention to the moving, changing phenomena. There's nothing wrong with thoughts or phenomena. It's just not going to bring us any peace to focus upon them. They can just happen while our attention is resting in and on what is permanent and real and stable about us. So the meditation that we're going to do, there are many other guided meditations now on the YouTube channel, both Spanish and English, and they're all in line with what I'm going to teach today. You can use any of them. Of course, you don't have to use a guided meditation. It's just sometimes easier than just sitting there by yourself the first few months when you begin meditation. For me, to sit on my own each day was very, very difficult. The guided meditation was much easier at first. And what I'm recommending is 20 minutes of meditation a day. And we'll do 20 minutes after we've been through this section together as a sangha here and it will be recorded so we can access it again. You can do more than 20 minutes meditation a day if you want to, but only if it feels fun. If we say, like I did, okay, I'm going to meditate for two hours a day. I'm going to get there four times as fast. It was coming from a separate sense of self that was trying to do more, effort more, achieve more. And it actually was counterproductive. Counterproductive because it emphasized the sense of separation, the sense of a separate someone who could make an effort. So you can carry on after 20 minutes if you like with your meditation as long as it feels good and you just want to kind of remain sitting there and enjoying it. The other thing I want to say about meditation before we really sort of dive deep into it is at first, when you notice the real self or the numanon, which is just a name that I liked when I began meditating here. Because numanon had no background for me. I'm going to list some names for that which is real. And some of them you will already know, like awareness, silence, presence, etc. And I've also used this word numanon many times. It just means that which is not perceivable by our senses. Numanon is that which is not an object. And that which cannot be experienced. But you can only be it. So it's synonymous with so many words, the supreme self, the stillness, consciousness, all of those. It's just another word. If you don't like it, don't use it. Going to use lots of words for who you really are in this study session. And just feel out the ones that feel good to you, feel out the ones that feel right to you. So meditation is developing a new habit of bringing attention to what really is true. At first, when we do that, what really is true, silence, stillness, presence, existence, consciousness, is going to seem really boring. And I need to say that because when I first put my attention on listening to the silence in meditation, it seemed utterly, utterly dull and I felt really actually quite disappointed. Because I was expecting something fantastic like the sages had described. But the fact is that what is real is here right now and we're all largely ignoring it because we think it's so kind of unimportant. And just as an example of this, how often do you walk into a room and pay attention to the space in the room rather than the objects? The space in the room is formless reality, is silence, stillness, presence. And yet most of us have this subtle idea that the phenomena are more important than that in which they appear. And you can tell that by what the attention goes to in our meditation. So we're going to notice that we all have this habit to bring attention to phenomena first and not judge ourselves on that. Every single awakened being has had to turn around this habit of attention moving again and again back to phenomena, objects, usually thoughts here, sensations, emotions, contractions in the body in meditation. So we're going to practice bringing our attention back to what is formless, what is not a phenomenon. But you don't have to make attention stay there. You just bring it back when you notice it's gone. And I'll show you how as we move through. I'm going to say that again because it's really, really important. You do not have to make attention stay on the formlessness. It will not stay, it will move. Even for beings who have been meditating for many years, attention will move back to phenomena out of habits. We're only bringing attention to what is real long enough. And again and again, there's some light, some energy, some life force can begin to pervade the mind and body. And we begin to have a chance of seeing that this is actually who we really are. And as we see this is who we really are, attention naturally goes to the silence by itself and it will start to come back during the day outside of our meditation session. Meditation will begin to eventually happen spontaneously. You'll just notice yourself paying attention to awareness or presence all by itself. It will just happen. So we're not trying hard with this meditation. There is no goal to achieve. In 20 minutes, if we're meditating as an example, listening to the silence, if I have to bring my attention back 100 times in that 20 minutes to the silence because it's gone to thoughts again, that doesn't mean it's a bad meditation. There is no good or bad meditation. There's only what happens today in meditation. There's only what's going on for me right now in my meditation. If I start to meditate for 20 minutes and I start listening to the silence and after 20 minutes, the timer goes off on my phone that I've set and I realize for the whole 20 minutes I was lost in thoughts, attention was on thoughts. Still, that's not a bad meditation. Why? Because I didn't know my attention was wandering into thoughts. Only if I suddenly become aware that wow, attention is on thoughts right now, then and only then do I have a choice to bring attention back. So the meditation works, it always works. There's no way for it to fail. We're just letting go of these ideas of good and bad meditation. So similarly, if I sit to listen to the silence for 20 minutes and I bring attention to the silence and it stays there for 20 minutes completely, never moves once, that's not a good meditation either. There is no good or bad meditation and we really cannot screw this up. That's the good news. You can only bring attention back to what is real once you realize it's wandered. So it's easier than we think. Meditation is not, at least here in these teachings, about achieving a particular state or having any realization. It's not about making attention stay on what is real. You cannot, not even a sage could make attention stay on what is real. There is only the attention that is going to wander and you're just bringing it back when it wanders. If you can accept the fact that it is going to go back to thoughts and that there is nothing that you are doing wrong in meditation, then you're going to have a much more fun time. You can just kind of go, oh, there it goes again. And I'm going to bring it back and where's the silence? Let me listen to the silence again. So there's no right or wrong meditation. I'm repeating this a few times just to really see if you can get rid of these ideas out of our consciousness. Just sitting for 20 minutes each day in meditation as consistently as you can. So at first, you're not going to do it every day. Why? Because the old habit of paying attention to phenomena is still playing and still you're at the effect of that habit. As you continue, you're going to have an increased desire to meditate every day because you'll start to notice the benefits outside of your meditation session and the rest of your waking state, the rest of your day. And you're going to notice some pretty cool things start to happen, such as an emotion comes up and you can't quite resist it so much. You can't blame yourself so much so easily as meditation deepens for anything actually. There's an increased capacity to be with what is, whatever that is, in phenomenality. There'll be a greater sense of well-being. You might find yourself sleeping better, less stressed throughout the day, which is good for everyone, including you. My children certainly said so when I began to meditate, they were happier. And more vitality and well-being happening in the body. And the body has a greater capacity to cope with anything that happens during the time, the waking state. So we're going to work from this book. You don't have to have this book at all. I will explain everything you need in this study session here. This book, Dissolving the Ego, is now in English and Spanish and you can buy it on Amazon if you want to. You don't need to have it though to follow along today at all. There's just a list in the front of 14 names for the real self, which I will go through. And if you have the book and you're interested in a particular name, then aspect of the self, you can read up in the book and get a little more info on it. Again, there are guided meditations already on YouTube here that we've done that fit in with these as well. So feel free to check that out. It's all for free up there. And these 14 names for the real self, I'll read them in a minute and then we'll go through them again. Just reminding you that when you first notice the real self, who you actually are, the formless reality, it might seem dull or boring. Because you know, the silence, it's always been here. It's the silence that you hear immediately when I stop talking. The same old silence that you hear when I'm not talking is the infinite silence. When I first heard it, it was like, that's just dull. But I began to see I was listening to silence through this idea that it was just necessary silence for the words to appear in and serve no other purpose. That the spaciousness in the room was just necessary for the objects to appear in and other than that, it served no purpose. It was unimportant. It was largely ignored. Meditation is a really a way of paying attention to what we always ignore. And it may seem paradoxical that we always ignore what's real when we say we're on a journey for truth and we want to become this truth. But if we can remember that we all have programming in our mind that formlessness is irrelevant and unimportant, at least initially, and that forms are more important than anything else specifically and specially, thought forms that we must pay attention to. All we're doing in meditation is shifting the habit, paying attention to what is real first. The default setting right now is attention goes to phenomena first. We're just going to flip that over. Attention goes to the silence, the stillness, the presence first. The phenomena are still happening, but they're happening in front of you or inside you rather than to you. Imagine if you could not pay attention to a thought anymore. What would that be like? They'd still be there. You could, they give you their useful information, but you couldn't fixate on them. It's a very different way to live. So I'm going to read through these 14 doorways, we've called them. Doorway just because they're words that might help you find a way into the real self that you already are. One of the hardest things for me in meditation was actually figuring out how to pay attention to what was real. How do I listen to silence? What is awareness? What is consciousness? What is awakeness? How do I access beingness? These questions slowed me down for quite some time and this is what this whole book was written for, to shortcut that journey. So there are 14 names and we're going to go through them in the order they're in the book. Silence, and I'll go through them one by one each time. Stillness, noticing a sense of being, noticing the sense of presence, staying in the I am, tuning into the awakeness, being conscious of your consciousness, noticing the existence, being a contextual field, the ever-present state of here, the stateless state of now, recognizing the knower, recognizing your own subjectivity. So all these 14 doorways are pointing to the same thing, these words, awareness, subjectivity, knower, beingness. They're all synonyms in the way that I'm using them. They just might help you unlock a door that isn't really there to access what is real about yourself. So as I'm going to go through them now, just going to spend a minute or two on each one. And I'm just going to suggest that you just maybe make notes or go back and watch this again when it's uploaded to YouTube and see which one you feel a particular resonance with. Some of these 14, you'll go, I really want to try that. Or you might already be doing. Some of them you go, I don't really feel any resonance. I don't like that one, don't want to try that one. If that's the case with some of them, I'd urge you to come back around to all of them later because we, as we shift our resistance and frequency, we might find some of these doorways more exciting than others. So we'll start with the first one, which is being aware of awareness. So the practice is to bring attention to awareness and not what we're aware of. So we can do this one simply by, and again, just listening, seeing if you feel a resonance with it. If not, it's okay. Not trying hard to understand anything while I'm talking. It's all going to be recorded and is being recorded, so you don't have to work hard. Usually, attention goes in our daily life to what we're aware of and very little attention to the actual awareness. So if a thought pops up in our head, we pay attention to that thought and very little attention goes, if any, to the awareness that is seeing it. So we can access this doorway by asking a question, starting with a question. Am I aware right now? Is awareness present? You can see that something is noticing what you're hearing through your ears. Something is noticing what you're seeing through your eyes. Something is aware, awareness is here. Again, it might just be plain old boring awareness, no big deal. Where's the big deal in that? But again, just as you bring attention to the awareness in the meditation, you'll find it's much more than just plain old boring awareness, way more. So the practice would be to bring attention back to the awareness itself. And we can use the phenomena in our meditation here to help us meditate. So if I notice that my attention has gone to a thought or an emotion or a sound in the environment, I can also notice that I'm aware of it. So it's almost like the thought is helping us by recognizing I'm aware of this thought. There's awareness here of this thought. So it would just be 20 minutes, bringing attention back to awareness when it moves to a phenomenon. Usually mostly thoughts. Thoughts have been given this special specialness in our psyche, but really they are just like all other phenomena, totally unreal. And we're not going to fight with the phenomena, the thoughts here, the sensations in our meditation. We're going to use them as meditation aids. So you're sitting to meditate, aware of awareness, awareness is here. Then anger rises up, fierce, strong anger rises. Usually we would say, this is getting in the way of my meditation, this anger. But can you use that anger to notice? Actually, I'm aware of this anger, there's awareness and then attention is right back on awareness. So 20 minutes bringing attention back as often as you need to. If you do that consistently each day, you will realize who you are completely, fully and totally. Second doorway is listening to the silence. And again, it's not going to feel like exciting silence at first. So just listening to the silence, the same silence when I stop talking is the infinite silence. Same silence that you're hearing now is the infinite silence that the sages talk about. But usually it's been heard through this belief that it's not that important. We've all been kind of ignoring it. 20 minutes, bringing attention to the silence, listening to the silence. When you're listening to silence, you'll notice something, just like being aware of awareness, that you cannot suffer. Even if thoughts, emotions and events are happening, you cannot actually suffer while you're listening to silence. And that is huge. At some point, you'll find yourself listening to thoughts. You can't stop it, you don't need to. Just when you're aware, wow, I'm listening to thoughts again. No judgment, nothing's gone wrong. Just, okay, let me come back to the silence in which the thoughts are appearing. Your listening itself is silent, right? What sound? Your listening itself is silent, right? What sound does listening make? If you really listen right now, you'll see that your listening itself is the silence, you are the silence. You can only hear words and thoughts because you are silence, listening to them through the contrast. The words, the thoughts are helping us to recognize by contrast what has always been here, the silence. So the next one, and again, I'm going through these at a fair pace. We'll practice one of these doorways right after I've finished, we'll do twenty minutes guided meditation. And you can come back and listen again and again and on the YouTube channel also, I have a playlist of me reading from these books. And there is one, two videos actually of me reading from this book Dissolve an Ego, if you don't have the book yourself. You can also, if you do have the book, you can read further into each section just to see whether you feel a resonance with it. So the third one is resting in the stillness. So stillness, silence, awareness are all synonyms. Awareness is silent, right? It's not making any noise. It's also still. So stillness is only really noticeable, there's something about you that still isn't moving when we contrast it against that which is moving. So if your body got up and walked to the other side of the room, moved across to the other side of the room, there is something in which it moves through that is not moving, it is completely still. If a thought pops up, then moves through and then disappears. That in which it moves is not moving, it is completely still. This doorway for me, when I first started meditating, I was cleaning houses for a living and a lot of physical exertion. And by the contrast at the end of that physical exertion, sitting down after a long day's work, there was this deep, deep recognition of this stillness that's not moving, no matter how much my body moves and does. So again, we're just using the contrast of phenomena to help us. The sounds help us recognize the silence. The movement of phenomena helps us recognize the stillness. We're not at war with phenomena and it is not the goal of this meditation to get rid of phenomena. They're actually helpful in our meditation, we completely turn our attitude around to it and we begin to enjoy it even. So twenty minutes bringing attention back to that stillness. Even that stillness in which attention is wandering around, right? You can see there's something that is here that's not a thing in which all movement happens and that in which movement happens is not moving, nor could it ever, it's completely still. It hasn't come to rest. It is totally immobile, could never move because it is everywhere. So the next one, noticing the sense of being. So first of all, if you have a thought, you have to be here first to see that thought. Your mind and your body are doing things, your mind is thinking, your body is moving. But you are just being, you are not doing anything. Even though attending this class here today is happening because your body just pushed the right buttons and got on the Zoom call, etc. You are just here, just being. Just kind of existing, just hanging out, just watching, just seeing, just being. So we would notice in our meditation for twenty minutes, the sense when something is doing, moving like the mind and body. Thought moves, emotion moves, noises in your environment, if you're sitting to meditate and you hear a sound from the room next door. You can just simply bring attention back to that which is just being, it's just here, right? You are just being. The human bit in the human being, we know very well, the being bit in the human being, we don't know so well. Meditation is just getting to know what's real. Falling in love with what's actually real. So twenty minutes bringing attention back as many times as you need to and to the beingness. And if you find that you spent twenty minutes lost in thoughts, that's still a good meditation because your intention was to bring attention back to the beingness whenever you noticed it had wandered. If you didn't notice it had wandered, you have no opportunity, it's totally okay. Only to bring it back when you do notice it's wandered. And I'm repeating these points because they were very important for me and I kept on blaming myself for attention wandering. Sometimes I was lost in thoughts for days and sometimes not at all. And it's all the same, over the days, the weeks, the months of meditation, something profound is gonna happen. Right from day one, the first day you listen to the silence or notice the beingness, you won't be able to suffer while attention is on the beingness, you won't be able to suffer. Suffering is bringing attention to phenomena, actually. The only reason we suffer is because attention is on phenomena, so we're just turning that around, making a new habit that will eventually become our default setting. So noticing a sense of presence is the next one. So there's something about you that's present, right? You showed up here for this class, this life, this body, you are present to what is happening in your experience. There is a presence that is you. Whatever that is in meditation, we don't know, we don't and we're not exploring what the awareness is or the beingness, we're just noticing it. The presence of you is here, you are not absent, you are present. Something is present right now that is you and it's listening to these words through your ears, looking at this image through your eyes. We're just now calling it presence. Again, all of these words are synonyms for the same formless infinite self. And we're just choosing like a menu in a restaurant, which ones we feel more aligned to and feel more fun meditating with. So just twenty minutes a day, noticing the sense of presence. I'm here, I'm present. There's something about me that is present. There is a presence of me. Not analyzing, just noticing. And then noticing at some point attention will go to the thoughts. You are present to the thoughts. And now you're just present to the presence, you bring attention back, I'm just here, I'm present, I'm not absent. Over and over again, as often as you need to in that twenty minutes. Your mind is gonna say, oh god, now I have to bring attention back over and over again to what is real. But actually, you're gonna find that this is actually really rather nice and fun if you're not putting any pressure on yourself, not making into a goal. It's so nice to come back to what is real again and again. Why? Because it's real and you can't suffer there. Every moment attention is on what's real. You're not sustaining the unreal. It's the only thing we can do to dissolve the ego. Ego is really just one thing and that is paying attention to phenomena. We dissolve the ego by bringing it back, attention back to what is real. And here we're calling it presence. Again, just listening to these lightly, just taking it in gently, seeing which ones you like and don't like. It's all good, no hard work here, right? We're just chilling out on a Sunday here together. Staying in the I am is next. So each one of us here has this sense of I, I do exist, I am. Not defining here in meditation what that I is. We'll do that in self-inquiry, but not here in meditation. I definitely am because I'm aware of what my senses are perceiving, I definitely am here, present, aware. I am. So meditation, just bringing attention back to this sense of I am, I do exist. And not to anything that comes after, the mind will start talking, I am tired, I am bored, I'm resisting, I'm hungry, I'm awakening to the self, I am not good enough. Everything that comes after I am is for the mind and the body and the phenomenality. The only thing that's true for you is that you are. I am is the only true thing you can prove, you do exist. Some people once told me that they don't exist and maybe they meant as a separate self, they don't exist. But even to assert that you don't exist, you do have to be here to assert it. Nothing is possible for you to notice or to experience unless you're here first, I am. This I am-ness is just bringing its sense back, attention back to this sense, I am. Not a thought, I am. If you think the words now, I am, in your head, you'll notice that something hears, hears it. That's the real I am. What hears the thought, I am, is the real I am. And again, it will just feel boring and, well, that's just me, I've always been here, it's just me. But bringing attention to it over and over again in our meditation, just to help it seemingly move, what's gonna happen is the sense of the phenomena seem to be at the forefront, the sense of a separate self. The real self seems to be at the background, we're just gonna swap those over in meditation. And suddenly you'll find yourself identifying as the real self, this is what I am. Silence, consciousness, presence, awareness. So just staying in the I am, twenty minutes a day helps to meditate at the same time each day and in the same place, at least initially, if you can. If you have your favorite chair or comfy sofa, you can do it in the same place and at the same time, helps to build the habit, same time each day, if you can. You can sit in any position at all, but don't lie down unless you really need to, like if you have a medical condition or some problem with your spine. If you lie down, you're gonna fall asleep. So we wanna be sitting up, but we can be propped up in cushions and pillows and all of that stuff, just as long as you're upright, unless you really have to lay down. You can do it with your eyes open or closed, there's no special posture for this meditation. All of that is not needed unless you want to do it. Let's also be careful not to mix these meditations with any other form of meditation that we're doing. You can do every other form of meditation that you're already doing, but just don't mix it with this one. It's not gonna be effective if we combine techniques. So doing this one for twenty minutes meditation on its own. Tuning into the awakeness. So again, another word for the same thing, awakeness. There's something about you that's awake, right? Maybe something needs some coffee in the morning or a cup of tea before you can really get going. But something did seem to wake up this morning, the waking state is here. Whatever it is, you can agree with me that you are awake right now, right? So we're just bringing attention in our meditation to the sense of awakeness which is highlighted throughout the waking state, but in fact is here at all times. Perhaps not recognizable in deep sleep as yet, but awakeness is just another word for awareness. Noticing the sense of awakeness. And then noticing thoughts most likely. Bringing attention back to what is real, awakeness itself for twenty minutes. And again, there is no good or bad meditation. Just putting that in there, very important. Being conscious of your consciousness is next. So most of us are conscious of things, phenomena. Conscious of thoughts, conscious of sensations in the body, emotions, energy moving, experiences that are happening. But right now as you're listening, you're conscious of these words. Just bring some attention to the consciousness itself, you can't see it with your eyes. There's something here that's conscious of these words. So again, you can use the phenomena like a thought or some words or an image. Your eyes are looking at a screen right now, seeing an image. What is it that's seeing that? What is it that knows what that image is? It's the consciousness itself that you are. So being conscious of your consciousness is just bringing attention to that consciousness. And again, it will wander back to what you're conscious of. Thoughts, emotions, etc. In the meditation, just bringing attention to what is real consciousness itself. And next one, noticing the sense of existence, very much like the I am, I am-ness. Just noticing that you do exist, right? You do exist, you are here. What you exist as, we're not really so interested in in terms of meditation. More, again, the territory for self-inquiry. But noticing that you exist, there's something, there's a sense of existence that's here now about you. Bringing attention back to that as often as you can in the twenty minutes. And you don't have to do more than twenty minutes, but twenty minutes is the recommended minimum each day. And if you've really pushed for time, you can split it into two ten-minute sections, one in the morning, one in the evening. But you know, if you can do it in twenty minutes continuously, that's better, it's gonna help you. So noticing the sense of existence. Just noticing that you exist, I exist. And again, anything else after that is referring to your body, your mind. I exist as a woman, I'm English, I'm tired, I'm bored, I'm resisting. All those things are talking about phenomenality. If you find resistance in your meditation or even physical pain, you can use to notice that you must be here first to be aware of them. You must exist first to notice resistance or physical pain in the body. Restlessness, frustration. All the best friends I had when I was beginning meditation, unwanted friends of course. But nonetheless, they're all useful meditation aids. You literally cannot fail with this meditation, there's no way for it to not work. And even if you can't kind of fully comprehend that yet, hopefully it's just a little reassuring or a lot. And it's exactly what I did to wake up to the truth. All, everything I'm teaching is what I did to wake up that actually worked. There was lots of things that didn't work, which I haven't put in the book on these teachings. Next is being the contextual field. And being the contextual field is really being the context in which phenomena are happening. Attention goes to the content, the things that move and change, like thoughts. And again, some people like to do this one with their eyes open. They've also called it zooming in and zooming out. When we zoom in, our attention goes to a phenomenon. When we zoom in, our attention goes to a phenomenon. You can do this one, we practice it right now. If you put your attention on a phenomenon, an object in the room that you're sitting in, any object at all. A sofa, a shoe, um TV, anything, or on the device that you're watching this on. Notice that you can now pay attention to the empty space, the spaciousness, the contextual field around the object itself. So as I'm looking at this laptop now, my eyes are looking at the laptop. My attention is on the emptiness, the field around the laptop. It's around all objects. And we'll see later, it's inside all objects as all objects, but just for now, bringing attention to the emptiness, the invisible nothingness that is surrounding every single object, including your body, including thoughts. We're calling that zooming out or being the contextual field. So it's simply a habit of bringing attention to the field, the context, rather than the content of the field, the phenomenality. And again, some of these you might really love, some of them you'll not feel a resonance with at all. That's why there's a menu, like in a restaurant, because you know, um when I was trying to recognise what is real. I found that there was this idea that I should be able to access uh my real self, pay attention to my real self. Through silence or awareness or whatever. And I found there were days that I needed different doorways, some days, sitting at home, silence for me was perfect, listening to the silence. Then listening to thoughts, listening to silence. In the middle of a busy airport, silence didn't seem accessible initially. Um, and so being the contextual field, being a space in which all the bodies were kind of moving backwards and forwards seemed much more easier and accessible in those moments. So you can try different ones of these every day, just don't mix them in the twenty minute session. So be in the contextual field, bringing attention back to the invisible silence still field of consciousness. The context, the background in which the content, the phenomena are happening in. Again, it's always been here, we're just largely not paid attention to it. Um, the ever-present state of here, we only have uh one, two, three, four more, so we're almost at the end, um. The ever-present state of here, there's something that became more clear to me, another name again, heerness. It's just another name for awareness, silence, stillness. Your body, uh when you, when I ask you where you are, you would say, I'm here. If your body got up and walked to the side of the room or the other side of the town that you're living in, the country, the continent even. When you get to the other side of it, it would still feel like here, I'm here. Notice that you never arrive there, when you arrive somewhere, it feels like here. When you have a thought, you can only have it here. When you feel an emotion, you can only feel it here and not there. So noticing a sense of heerness that pervades and is the constant background to all our experiences. If you check it right now, you'll feel, I'm experiencing this here. Not over there, you can't have an experience over there, doesn't work, I tried it, it doesn't work. So bringing attention to the heerness itself, here is not a physical location. It's a formless uh state of ever-present is-ness. Just noticing, if you have a thought, you're having it here. If you feel an emotion, it's happening here, when you arrive somewhere, you arrive here. If you went to a different country and you called me, you say, when you got there, you'd tell me I'm here now. It would feel like heerness, wouldn't it? There's no way your body can go to get outside of heerness. Even the other side of the universe, if that were possible, it would still feel like heerness. Fifty years ago, twenty years ago, ten years ago, still it felt like heerness. Ten years from now, still heerness will be here, totally. Noticing attention moves to what's happening inside the heerness like a thought. Again and again, just bringing it back to heerness, you're getting the idea by now, right? Just simply bringing attention back to the heerness itself. A um stateless state of now. So again, just like the heerness, whatever is happening, whatever you're experiencing can only be happening now. Now isn't a time on a clock. Now is that formless infinite space in which all events and experiences and phenomena are arising. Can you think a thought yesterday? Or tomorrow? You can only think a thought now, right? You can only have a thought now, you can only meditate now. You can only attend this class now. Later, if you go back and watch this class again on YouTube, you'll be watching it now, it will have the same sense of noun-ness to it as it does right now. If you were to do some self inquiry or cook some lunch or go to bed, it would all feel like it's happening now. And it wouldn't be any time that you experienced anything in the future or the past. Even if you think about the past right now, you're doing it now. If I remember something that happened to me ten years ago, I'm remembering it now, aren't I? If I anticipate something I'm scared of in the future, or excited about even, I'm anticipating now. There is no past or future, there's only this now moment. And unlike what our mind thinks, it's not a now, 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 segments of time that we're experiencing. We can ask this question, when does this moment end, this now moment? If we just check out right now together, how long does this moment last for? And let's see when it ends. Now is not an experience. Now is a constant state or field or something that which we don't really have a word for. A constant condition. It never began and it will never end. So we're just bringing attention to that in our meditation for twenty minutes. Uh noticing that attention wanders to what is happening inside this now moment. A thought arising, some resistance, some contraction in the body, the dog barking outside. And then just noticing the dogs barking now, right now, not yesterday. There's that sense of noun-ness again, right? So we're using the phenomena to help us come back to that noun-ness. Uh recognizing the knower. So the knower is just that which knows, it's not a person knowing. You know right now what these words mean. If you were to put your hand on something hot accidentally, you would know immediately it's hot. You don't have to think about it, it's not the thinker, it's the knower. Just checking out right now how your body feels, is it cold, hot, tired, awake? You know immediately, right? You don't have to think about it, something about you that knows. When I suggest this doorway even, the knower, you know, I don't like that one so much, or actually I do like this one, I'm gonna give it a go, gonna give it a try. You already know. So knowingness happens before thought, it is that knower that knows what thoughts are appearing, that sees what thoughts are appearing. Again, just another word for awareness, presence, stillness, awakeness. Recognizing the knower then is just to sit for twenty minutes in meditation and bring attention back to that which knows, that which sees. And again, it will just feel like your ordinary everyday sense of me, I know, I know what my mind's thinking, no big deal. But just bringing attention back again and again and again, you'll begin to see it's something very different than we have maybe imagined ourselves to be. And last but not least, um although some people don't like this one initially, I did not like this one initially, but somehow it fascinated me. Is uh recognizing your own subjectivity. So most of our lives we spend living as a subject-object divide. We believe there's a me that's experiencing, who's a someone, an object, a phenomenon. Separate and what I'm experiencing, I'm separate to what I'm experiencing. So when we look for our real self, there's something that's purely subjective. Not a subject, not a person, there's subjectivity itself. Experiencing and no experiencer, experiencing is happening. There's something experiencing this class, isn't there, about you? And it's purely subjective. It's not an object. Subjectivity, because it's pure sentience, pure formlessness that is aware, that is experiencing. And that's always happening, you're always experiencing, right? You're experiencing the body at night time in deep sleep, you're experiencing no time, no space in deep sleep. In the dream state, you're experiencing the dream. And in the waking state, you're experiencing the waking state, still that subjective witness of it all is here at all times. So the meditation here is just to bring attention back to that which is um pure subjectivity itself, pure witnessing, pure experiencing. And to notice that it will go, attention will go to what you are experiencing. And just bringing it back to the pure subjectivity itself over and over. So there's fourteen doorways there, again, they all mean the same thing. Could also call it emptiness, nothingness, formlessness, supreme self, power Brahman. All these words have been used to describe what you really are, absolute, all of that. And what we're gonna do now is just to do twenty minutes guided meditation with one of these doorways. And I'm gonna do the contextual field, I'm gonna zoom in and zoom out. But again, if you prefer a different doorway than what we're going to do here and you've just, you've really resonated with one of them that I've described today, you can follow along the meditation. But just do your own doorway, listen to the silence instead. Again, remembering that uh you can do this with your eyes open or closed, there's no special posture. We'll meditate for twenty minutes together. And then we'll take a break before I open it up for, for questions and answers. And um just following along the best you can, if, if at any time you get lost in the meditation. Just bringing attention back to what is real, the contextual field here, I'm gonna call it. So let's get a, a nice and comfy place we can sit in, if you need to get comfy and shuffle around, now's a good time. And we're just gonna begin by bringing attention to some objects appearing inside of us. So just looking at an object happening in the room, you can use your hand. You can use the image on the computer, you can use the sofa, the cat, anything at all. I'm gonna ask you to keep your eyes open here for this uh doorway, initially at least. Please don't close your eyes until, um you can blink, of course. But don't close your eyes until um we get deeper into it. So just looking at your object, whatever that object is, I'm gonna use this laptop here. And noticing that you can see also empty space around the object. So in front of this laptop and behind and all around, there is empty spaciousness. The invisible formlessness right there. And noticing that your attention doesn't have to follow what your senses are doing, so your eyes can look at an object. Your eyes can gently rest on the object. But your attention can be perceiving something different. The empty spacious, formless contextual field around the object. And just as we're doing this again. Your mind is gonna begin to slow down, your body might begin to relax, but just see if you can keep your eyes open. And just gently looking at the object. Whenever your attention moves from the formless uh contextual field to the object itself or to a thought about the object. Or to any thought, just bringing it back, noticing the space around the object that you're looking at. We're just going to meditate like this. That whenever we notice attention has shifted to looking at some phenomenon, it has zoomed in, attention has zoomed into an object. We're just going to bring it back to notice the spaciousness, the formlessness, the field. We're going to come to recognize that our attention doesn't have to follow wherever our senses are going. So just relaxing, we're not staring hard at anything, just lightly taking in the object that we're looking at with our eyes. Keeping our eyes open. And noticing that your attention can also be on the space around the object at the same time. You might start to feel some peace, some relaxation in the body. The body might get agitated, there might be resistance. Whoever attention goes to objects, just bringing it back to the space around the object you're looking at. Simply, this is meditation as we're practicing here. Bringing attention back to the formless space. Out of habits, attention will wander to a thought. And we're just simply turning that habit around by bringing it back. So just lightly taking in the objects that you're looking at with your eyes. And bringing attention to that around the object which is not perceptible to the eyes. bringing attention to that around the object, which is not perceptible to the eyes. Just gently like this, if you notice at any point attention wanders. No blame, no judgment of yourself. Attention wanders for all of us. And we're just bringing it back to the formlessness around the object, the invisible formlessness. We're just learning to see that that formlessness is always accessible. And attention can be on it even in the waking state while our bodies, our senses are engaged in other things. And if your eyes do want to close at this point, it's okay. But if you notice a thought arising, or an emotion arising, noticing the space, the formless, no-thingness, in which the thought arises, bringing attention back to that as often as you need to. And if attention has wandered back to a thought, just bringing it back to the space around the object you're looking at. Gradually, attention will want to come back to this no-thingness, the field, more and more by itself. While attention is on the formless field, the contextual field around the object, it's very hard for our mind to be thinking. You may find that the mind goes quiet. But again, that's not the goal here. There is no goal. Just noticing if attention has wandered to a phenomenon. And bringing it back to the formless contextual field, the space around the object, that which is invisible and intangible and noticeable through the contrast of the object you're looking at. So we will just continue this for another five minutes or so. And if at any time you notice your attention has moved, just gently bringing it back to the contextual field around the object.
Thank you for joining us. We'll be back in fifteen minutes.